...our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll, please. Seifert.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
MacIver. Marquess.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Belke.
Here.
Six present. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. I believe we've all discussed any items that we need to, but if, is there anyone in the audience that wanted to address the council on any item? It doesn't have to be on the agenda this evening for our voting. Okay, I will move right on to the approval of the minutes of April 6th. Do I have a motion to approve Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Marquess? Any additions or deletions for the clerk? Then the roll, please. Seifert.
Aye.
Marquess.
Aye.
Belke.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes. The minutes have been approved. Let's move to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Late on Friday afternoon, I got an email from Christina Ramirez at 8339 Ripple Ridge in Darien. The email was about an incident that happened at Hinsdale South on that day, where two men were handing out anti-abortion material with very graphic images, right on the city sidewalk in front of the high school. The main concern of the email was not First Amendment rights, but why the city of Darien does not have an ordinance that would require protesters to pre-register with the city ahead of time. So in this situation, students would not, would be prepared and could avoid seeing these items if they wanted to, because most high school students are minors. The reason that Christina asked why we don't have an ordinance is because she spoke with the principal at Hinsdale South, and the principal explained that since there is no ordinance against us, this, there was no way that the high school had a chance to prepare. About the same time, Stephanie Palmer, who's a principal at Hinsdale South, sent over an email explaining the incident to everyone in the district. On Friday afternoon, or I'm sorry, on Friday evening and into Saturday, I was involved in a discussion with, involved in the situation with Administrator Vanna, Chief Brown, and City Attorney Murphy. As I told the three of them, I'm not here to discuss the First Amendment rights, nor am I here to discuss about, you know, abortion rights. The point is, I could emphasize with Christina about the fact that the kids are minors, and I understand her feelings. The question came on up, can anything be done in this situation? Can we do anything at all to have an ordinance for preregistering protesters? This led to a discussion where John Murphy had to issue an opinion, and I asked that the opinion addressed registering their protesters ahead of time, freedom of speech within a certain distance, and content of material. I want to thank Attorney Murphy, because he issued this today, and here is his opinion. There's three short paragraphs I'd like to read from it. The first in regards to freedom of speech within a certain distance. "A few years ago, Massachusetts passed a law prohibiting leafletting and anti-abortion advocacy within 35 feet of an entrance or driveway to clinics where abortions are performed. In the case of McCullin versus Coakley, the court held that the restriction violated the First Amendment. As the court explained historically, sidewalk First Amendment activity is especially protected under the law. It is the one place where individuals may engage in low-cost First Amendment activity, and therefore, the government's ability to restrict speech in such locations is very limited. In regards to content of material, one of the most essential aspects of this area of the First Amendment law is that the government, and the city as a government, may not regulate speech on the basis of its content. In other words, the city may not pick and choose among the messages that may be conveyed by the way of sidewalk solicitation or advocacy. For example, the city could never adopt an ordinance requiring individuals proposing controversial solicitation or solicitation dealing with hot topics like abortion to register before engaging in sidewalk solicitation, while allowing other messages to be conveyed freely without registration, such as vote for Smith or lower our taxes." And then finally, in regards to preregistering. "The court's view, the court's view of municipal registration are permitting requirement as a prior restraint on free speech, which is almost never allowed. In a case dealing with Jehovah's Witnesses solicitation, the Supreme Court said that it's offensive, quote, 'not only to the values protected by the First Amendment, but to the very notion of a free society, that in the context of everyday public discourse, a citizen must first inform the government of her desire to speak to her neighbors, and that, and then obtain a permit to do so,' unquote. As you can see, the First Amendment activity like leafletting or public sidewalk is virtually immune from governmental regulation." The bottom line is, after reviewing everything, the best way to handle this situation, according to Attorney Murphy, in the city's opinion, is to basically tell your kids, if you see anything that's basically you think is offensive, stay away and do not accept that, because that's the best way to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other communicate, Alderman Kenny?
Again, Madam Mayor. Communication from Mr. John Strauss, 1900 block of Gigi Lane. He was taken back by the rainstorm we had the other night. Apparently, our staff was out opening up fire hydrants and doing their, their flushing their fire hydrant system throughout the nights, and he wanted to know why it was done during the rain, that his basement might get, or his, might get flooded. But when we went there, everything was already done. So that was just the only communication I got, based on the flushing of fire hydrants. Apparently, we do it 10 o'clock at night to 6 o'clock in the morning, so we're not impacting any residents. And his concern was that there was, during the middle of a rainstorm, that they were actually opening them up.
Any other communications to share? Let's move to the mayor's report, and I have a couple of items. The first item is a motion to approve a resolution commending Zachary F. Kennedy. I'd like to read that resolution first. "Whereas Zachary F. Kennedy is the son of Kevin and Linda Kennedy, and whereas Zachary attended Avery Coonley School and is currently a senior at Downers Grove South High School, and whereas Zachary competed in the 2015 State of Illinois IHSA Speech Tournament at the Peoria Civic Center on February 20th to the 21st, 2015, and whereas Zachary won a first-place medal in original oratory, and whereas Zachary won a first-place medal in humorous duet acting, which he performed with Senior Reese Richardson of Woodridge, and whereas Zachary was the only dual event winner at the state finals, and whereas the Downers Grove South team finished third place, and whereas Zachary also qualified and will be representing Downers Grove South at the National Speech Tournament, which will be held in Dallas, Texas in June 2015, and whereas Zachary has also been recognized as one of the 12 graduating seniors who made up the top 2% academically at Downers Grove South High School, and whereas Zachary has been on a high honor role, high honor roll every semester, exceeding a 4.0 grade point average in every grading period since freshman year, and whereas Zachary is an officer within the student government, as well as a member of the National Honor Society, French National Honor Society, MASK and GAVL, and other leadership organizations, and whereas Zachary is an active, is active in the theater at Downers Grove South High School, having played the lead in Flowers for Algernon, Peter Pan, and Midnight, A Midsummer's Night Dream. Now therefore, be it resolved by Mayor Weaver and the city council of the city of Darien, DuPage County, that Zachary F. Kennedy is hereby commended for his first-place honors at the State of Illinois IHSA Speech Tournament, and his numerous achievements and accomplishments through his years at Downers Grove South High School. Do I have a motion to approve Alderman Marquess, seconded by Alderman Belke? The roll, please. Marquess.
Aye.
Belke.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
MacIver. Aye. Seifert.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye.
Clerk Gregona.
Aye.
Treasure Corn.
Aye.
Attorney Murphy.
Aye.
Administrator Vanna.
Yes.
Twelve ayes. It's unanimous, and Zachary, this, you, this resume is quite remarkable. And congratulations on just a remark, as I said, a remarkable resume here. Why don't you come up and shake everyone's hand and accept this?
Most don't want to say a few words. You probably could.
Okay, let's, let's do that.
Right to the microphone. It's perfect, right? Right to the mic.
Okay, we'll sit down and we'll let you talk, and then you, we'll shake your hand.
Oh, okay.
Actually, I, when I went down to speak to Zachary earlier, I told him that we, if he'd like to say a few words, please do.
Okay. Well, thank you to the city of Darien and Mayor Weaver for honoring me and for recognizing my accomplishments. It's, it's amazing that I get to stand here. I lived in Darien my whole life. I've been really involved with Darien activities like DYC. I got my first job umpiring with DYC, so I love Darien. And this last year, before I move away for the first time to college, to be able to stand here before the council and be recognized is really cool. So, so thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Now you can come up and shake everyone's hand. And then we'll come down and, and I'll, yeah. Claire, I'll present this to him down here.
I don't know yet. Got a week to decide.
I know.
No pressure. Basically, yeah.
Yeah, roll number one. What do you say the one that gives them more money? They give you the most money. Okay, let me, we want to do a photo op here, so let's, let's.
I like things like this.
Sure, get us a pic.
Was that on our wall of fame upstairs, huh?
Absolutely, this is on our wall of fame. Claire, you'll give us the picture to put on the wall of fame.
Yep. Let mom take a picture.
I wonder, do you want to take a picture?
No, no, I'll just take a picture.
Okay, should we do?
No, that's a good, that's a good thing. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And Zach, you know, all our meetings are on air and taped and on YouTube and all that too, so you could see them.
Oh, cool. I will check that out.
All right.
As I told Zachary before, I said it's, well, this is, this is the best part of our city council meetings, when we get to honor our young people, and we, we welcome every opportunity to do that. So thank you for joining us this evening.
And they're welcome to leave.
Yes, yes, that's right. We, we're, sometimes we're not real exciting in some of the stuff we do, so if you feel the urge to leave instead of sitting through our meeting, please feel free, so don't worry about that. You won't, you won't offend us, yes. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And now I'd like to invite Claire von Giovanni, the president of the Darien Chamber, to come up and give us an update.
Good evening. The Darien Chamber of Commerce is very excited to announce three new members. Darien Hearing Center located at 7702 Cass Avenue in the Cass Professional Building. Stay tuned for Darien Hearing Center, Hearing Center's ribbon-cutting ceremony date soon. TGIF Fridays join the chamber. They're located at 2201 75th Street. And Stella's Place located at 7415 75th Street. And Stella will be, Stella's Place will be celebrating their ribbon-cutting on Thursday, May 7th, at 5:00 PM. Chase Bank located at 7501 Cass Avenue will celebrate their ribbon-cutting ceremony this Thursday, April 23rd, at 6:00 PM, followed by business after-hours. Prior to the Chase Bank ribbon-cutting, the city of Darien invites you to the Darien Point Park ribbon-cutting ceremony at 5:45. Darien Point Park is located on Cass and Plainfield at the Clock Tower. Darien Dash is 27 days away. Darien Dash will be held on Sunday, May 17th, at Darien Community Park. Once again, the chamber, chamber will reward local schools and youth organizations $2,500 with the most paid race participants. Online registration closes at 11:59 on Thursday, May 14th. Advanced reservations will be accepted on Friday, May 15th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Saturday, May 16th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, right here at Darien City Hall. Race day registrations will be accepted on Sunday from 6:30 AM and will close promptly at 8:00 AM. For more information on Darien Dash, visit dariendash.com. Former Darien resident, singer-songwriter Andrew Salgado will be returning to Darien for his CD release party, which will be held at Chuck's Southern Comfort Cafe on Friday, May 15th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. This event is free and open to all ages. Save the date for the Third Annual Pet Parade, which will be held at Darien Fest on Sunday, May 13th. Remember to use your shop, local shop, Darien Preferred card at the following locations. Fruitful Yield, Wild Orchid Salon, Zazzo's Pizza and Catering, Shirin Barefoot Books, Q Bar and Grill, La Notte Due, The Patio, Colvers, Chuck's Southern Comfort Cafe, B&amp;R Dentists, Carriage Greens Country Club, Mi Hacienda, Edward Jones James Burke, Jet's Pizza, Home Run Inn, The Crazy Burrito, and The Goddard School. That's it.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Any questions for Claire? Okay, thanks, Claire. Let's move to the city clerk's report.
No report this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City administrator's report?
Uh, no report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Department head information, I believe the chief is going to address the council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members and public. I'm going to deviate from the normal format for the, for the newsletter tonight. The stats are there, and if there are any questions about the stats, please feel free to ask, but I wanted to talk a little bit, I've been here for three and a half years now, and I want to talk a little bit about how we get to the decision-making process and how the police department is being run now, and what we do and what, what drives our decision-making. So there are basically five components to our decision-making process. Data-led policing, leadership, and leadership essentially means looking for new ways to do things and doing what's best for the city and not being riveted to the old way of how we've always done things. Management accountability, fiscal responsibility, and crime prevention. There can be no clearer example of the need for management accountability and what it does for us in a recent arbitration award. We, as many of you know, last year, we moved to terminate one of our tenured officers. The officer had been observed by one of our newest sergeants, who was placed under the accountability model. And the, the officer had been observed in places where the potential for sleeping was, was high, and the possibility for doing police work was low. And so the, the officer was admonished on several occasions, and ultimately, we initiated an investigation that resulted in the officer's interrogation. As a result of the interrogation, there were, it was revealed that there were falsifications in official police documents, and what the city and the police department moved to terminate this officer. The officer took the case to arbitration, resisting the termination, and ultimately, the arbitrator ruled last month and upheld the termination based on the falsification of official documents. We should be clear that the driving force behind this was the accountability. The fact that the supervising sergeant who made this observation knew unequivocally that he had a mission-specific performance that he expected from his folks, and it wasn't being done, and he moved to find out why it wasn't being done, so. It's a sad day when any officer loses their job, but in terms of the cost to the city, both in terms of the arbitration and ultimately, the cost to, to having other people do this officer's job, I think it was money well spent, so. Talk about communication. Communication in terms of, not just internally, but bidirectionally, how we communicate with the public. The data helps us make faster, helps us process information faster. Faster recognition leads us to faster decision-making. Faster decision-making lets us know that we can get the information out to the public quicker. The faster the public gets the information, the more steps that we can take to protect the public, and the public can protect themselves. So if there's, call to mind the burglary pattern in November. We got the information out. We held town hall, town hall meeting with the alderman, alderman support, and the information got there quicker. And the fact is, is we have not had a burglary. We've only had one burglary, I should say, in the 8,000 block of Sawyer since the 17th of November, and that's the only burglary we've had of a residential nature. That's progress, it's not success. Zero for 12 months is a success, so we want to keep moving in that direction. But enhancing the communication means more than just talking about crime data. We want to make sure that we get the message out in, in a bunch of different venues. And so, right now, one of the things that we, we've been online with for almost a year now is Crime Reports. I would encourage everybody to log on to www.crimereports.com. It's our city's mapping, crime mapping service. You're able to log on. You can put notices for yourself. You can make, create a concentric circle for yourself and identify the types of calls that you want to be notified of. And it'll, it'll send you email alerts to your email. So it's really interesting. You can log on, and as we move towards our new CAD and new RMS systems in DuPage County, it'll become more effective. And so, that's in place now. Nixle.com, the Darien webpage, Direct Connect. And quite frankly, we're still looking for other options. So we're looking at some other options that are used by other areas of the law enforcement industry to reach out to, to our residents. It's important that we're able to communicate. The faster the communication lines, as we've said, the more information we're able to exchange. Crime updates, as you can see from the report, I won't go through those. It's a fairly lengthy report. But our largest increase in, in crime is retail theft, and it's from Walmart. And we're going to be working with Walmart. Residential burglaries, we just talked about it, is down. The burglaries to the motor vehicle, we still have to be vigilant. We had one burglary to the motor vehicle this weekend. We're down for the year, but the only way we're going to stay down is if the weather gets warm, is continued vigilance, locking your doors, our community education with our red hang-on tags, continued registration of your private video surveillance, and proper resource allocation, allocation on the part of the police. We're also looking at the Hinsdale South High School thefts. We're working with school administrators on that. So then, then we want to take a look at, from our perspective, is how the department works. Our management accountability model, identifying and utilizing data. Enhance, it enhances our crime-fighting capability. It allows us to develop crime-prevention strategies. It allows us more time to build collaborative relationships. We operate more efficiently. We increase our training, and we are able to mitigate risk more effectively. So when we say talk about, we talk about time mitigation. Where does this time come from? So what we do is, if you look at page nine, you'll see a huge pie chart on page nine of the report. And what it shows is, the big pie chart is 50,895 hours. That encompasses all of the possible available hours for, for police duties by our patrol section. And so what, then we look at the allocated time. That's the stuff that we have to do. The 911 calls, vacation, training, and administrative duties. That, that pales out to 19,516 hours. Then we look at discretionary time. That's the stuff that, that we direct our officers to do and that they self-initiate on their own while driving around on patrol. That comes to 18,000 hours. Then we look at unallocated time. That's 13,226 hours. That represents about seven full-time police officers for a year. So our essential component to look at is the 18,000 plus the 13,000 hours. That's, those are the hours that our managers can manage. Those are discretionary, pretty much, we can prioritize, and we can, and on any crime condition, on any disorder condition, on anything we want to address, that's where we get the time. So that's why it's critical that the, the managers know what that time is and how, and that they can prioritize and use it in any way that makes us function more efficiently. Those are the two categories that matter most. We provided our, our, our managers with the data, but once we provide them with the data, we expect them to do something with it. So it goes again back to that circumstance we talked about with the, with the sleeping officer. That's why it's important, because now those managers know what's expected of them. They have data to prove what's expected of them, and then they can go out and allocate resources appropriately. We've developed some good crime-prevention strategies. We worked with McDonald's to do some things. We've worked with, looked at fireworks calls during the 4th of July. Probably one of the biggest things for us is, is that we were able to reduce the, the amount of time, the amount of money that we spent on pre-planned events, Darien Fest being the lead. We reduced the, the price of Darien Fest by about 40%. And, and we're still looking at ways to, to operate more efficiently. Move detectives out. We put a detective into our DEA task force. Those only come, those kind of changes can only come if we have a full-blown knowledge of where our, our resources are and how much time that we have that we can manage and manipulate. Are there any questions? I won't belabor this.
Anything for the chief?
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Chief, just one comment. I know at the police committee meeting tonight, Nick, Officer Squares gave an overview of the crime-free housing ordinance we're at to date, and I know the chief will be having Nick come to the city council within the next couple of meetings to give a, an update to the council and the public.
Yes, sir.
I think, I think our canine is coming to one of our future meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
That's correct.
All right. Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other department head reports?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
We got a question.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Traffic lights. When do we look in for those?
Traffic signal lights.
Traffic signals, please.
Yeah, when are we going to get rid of all of those overhead temporary wires?
Traffic signal lights are scheduled to be going in the 23rd through the 27th, followed by the telephone, the temporary lights and poles to be removed, followed by concrete restoration and finishing up of landscape restoration. So hopefully, within the next month there, we should be buttoned up. Couple punch list items, specifically Plainfield and 75th Street, the architectural walls, those are a little bit behind right now. There's some problems with the manufacturing of them. But nonetheless, it's moving along. Majority of the work should be completed within the next 30 to 45 days.
Good news.
You know, when Alderman Shower mentioned that, I was thinking he was talking about the ones at Bailey and Plainfield. How, how far along are we on that project?
We're just, I think we're just at engineering, aren't we?
We're just in the preliminary engineering at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions for department heads? Okay, let's move on to the treasurer's report. Treasure Corn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 141523, in the amount of $1,959,145.98. Payroll for the period ended April 16th, 2015, in the amount of $233,794.17, for a total be approved of $2,192,940.15. Just for a point of clarification, you notice the debt service fund reflects a payment of $1,394,855.56. That reflects the early extinguishment of our 2007 bonds, which we approved for next year accelerated. Those should be paid off on Wednesday. I did the wire transfer for those funds today.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Seifert? Discussion? Then the roll, please. Kenny.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Marquess.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belke.
Aye.
Six ayes. The warrant has been approved. Do you want to go over the monthly report now?
Okay, the monthly report reflecting the 11 months ended March 31st, 2015, reflects general fund year-to-date revenue of $12,830,100, expenditures of $10,101,149, for a current balance of $3,633,705. Water fund year-to-date revenue, $5,631,079, expenditures, $5,561,108, for a current balance of $1,089,303. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue, $717,979, expenditures of $588,543, for a current balance of $281,890. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue, $2,290, Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue, $2,290, expenditures $192,386, current balance Capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue, $4,481,640, expenditures of $3,808,839, for a current balance of $6,092,397. And the capital projects debt service fund year-to-date revenue, $502,437, expenditures of $497,750, for a current balance of $18,100.
Any questions on the treasurer's report? Now, let's move on, thank you. Oh, you wanted to make an announcement?
Oh, no, not till we get to the.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on to standing committees reports. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder, the Municipal Services Committee will be meeting next Monday, April 27th, at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
Alderman Belzak?
Yes, the police committee meeting took place today, and the February 17th minutes were approved. Our next meeting will be on May 18th, at the police training room across the parking lot.
Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next admin finance meeting will be held on Monday, May 4th, at 6:00 p.m. in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And our police pension fund will have our quarterly meeting reviewing the first-quarter performance of the police pension fund, next Wednesday, April 29th, at 7:00 p.m., the police training room across the street.
Thank you. And that's a meeting that's open to the public?
Yes. Like to have some of the public there.
It would be nice, yes, to see what's, what's happening with those funds. Let's move on to questions, comments, and agenda-related. Do any of the aldermen have any questions on any of the items on the agenda? Then I'd like to open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience have any questions, comments on the items that are on the agenda this evening? Then let's move on to old business, and there being no old business. I'll move right to the consent agenda. We have three items for approval on the consent agenda. The first, item A, has to do with the Darien Fest, which is going to be held September 11th, 12th, and 13th, and it includes the road closures that accommodate the carnival rides along Clarenon Hills Road. Also, it provides for the police protection for Darien Fest. The next item is a motion granting a waiver of the $50 a day fee for the temporary liquor license for the Darien Fest. And item C is a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the City of Darien. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belkey, seconded by Alderman Belzak? The roll, please.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Six ayes.
All items have been approved. Let's move to new business. Item A is a motion to authorize the staff to proceed with the following amenities for the redevelopment of the southwest corner of Cass Avenue and Plainfield Road in an amount not to exceed $6,500, which consists of an irrigation system for our park area, and the painting of the rooftop speakers on top of the clock tower. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower? Discussion?
Madam Mayor, just a point of clarification, so folks at home understand that this is the southwest corner of the actual development, not the actual southwest corner of Cass and Plainfield Road that we're talking about.
If there's no further discussion, the roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Six ayes.
The motion has been approved. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature.